It's almost late.
Looks like it's based by, you know, a web to tell. If you have an eye set on it, I think that's the highway. It's right there, uh, state highway symbols or something. It looks like a beehive. Yeah, it's kind of neat. It's kind of neat to see. The chinooks.
I know.
Be a good rabbit in here. Hopefully no fires. Right, all the fires. The mountains, the holy fires.
Good evening and, uh, welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Time is now six P M. Regular meeting, a city council, city council. Would not come to work, which please rise to the pleasure of meetings. Praise my God, which please for my family.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gocca, please.
Bonato.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Riego.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
McTain.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Prove the agenda. Are there any changes? But that motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All vote.
Bonato.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Riego.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
McTain.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Do you have any staff reports? Huh? Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are all written. Can you get that for me, please? Greg, do you have the letter from the livestock association?
It was in our, it was in our back. And then we have response letter both.
You got it? Yeah. Now let's go and take Mary Jo Abadina first.
Hello, councilman and mayor. Uh, two things that I wanted to address tonight. The first one being the dock at Central Park is really weakened. And the reason I know that is obviously most of you know I have a son that has autism. And we go probably three or four times a day out there. And he loves to run on that dock and kind of lean on the railing that's there. And it's just real shaky. It's wood and, um, just if we can get something to stabilize that. It's a lot of fun. I know a lot of other kids that go and they go fishing out there and, you know, it's just really fun for the kids, but it's just kind of a safety concern as well. So I just wanted to bring that up and see if there's a way, um, to get stabilization on, on that surface. So that's one thing.
What we've been talking about that is putting one or two of those docks from downtown out there. Uh, pebbles. People don't want them on Main Street, so we got to use them. So even that dock's too small. So if we could do something like that, it'll make it bigger area.
Oh, they would love that. Yeah, still just an idea. And then I have some really great news. I'm so excited. Um, we actually got our A B A place, which is our applied behavior analysis. So excited. Um, consultants for children are coming down from Lakewood. They bought the building that used to be Edward Jones by Mariposa, which is Maple and Maine, right there on the corner. And, um, they are starting slowly because of Medicaid issues with coding, but we're, we're gaining. So if you know anybody that's good with children that is looking for a job, they will be hiring R B Ts, which is a registered behavior technician. And the starting pay, I think, is twenty dollars an hour. So it's an excellent, excellent job. They'll have the full benefits. Um, I'll bring some, um, flyers down, down here so you guys can post them up. And, um, we're on a roll. So it's very exciting news. It's going to be great for Walthamburg. It's going to be great for Raton because Medicaid's also going to work with Colorado. At first that was going to be an issue. I just found out Friday that's not going to be an issue. So I'm going to try to hit up Raton. We will be going to Walthamburg. So networking with a lot of families. So some excellent news. I just wanted to bring it in share with you guys.
Congratulations. I think they're working hard to, that was your goal.
It was, yes, yeah. So, oh, thank you so much, guys. Appreciate it.
Item four eight, which is Chamber of Commerce report.
I want to speak first. Good evening, mayor, uh, city council, city manager, and city attorney. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here. My name is Linda Baron and I'm representing the Chamber, uh, Trinidad-Las Vegas County Chamber of Commerce. I have me, with me, um, Japi Israel is our treasurer. And so we want to report our financial to you. And we want to thank you for supporting the chamber all these years. And we hope that you can continue to support the chamber in the future. I also have with me is our income president. Do you want to stand up? Chair Jacobson, two thousand nineteen and twenty. I'm going to turn it over to Japi, the money man, so he can talk about the money.
Well, what I've got is a summary of, um, the last six years. And, um, everybody thinks that the most important thing is a P and L. As far as I'm concerned, a viable organization is judge owns balance sheet. Because if you don't have assets and you, you have few liabilities, then you're going to be around a lot longer. So what you've got here, if you look at the balance sheet, we started out back in twenty thirteen. Um, well, actually, Lynne and I started in twenty fourteen. But what we had at the end of twenty thirteen, you can see there, we minus cash. And I've got two dates there for twenty thirteen because we made some adjustments based on a lot of billings that had been made and were never collected over three or four or five years. And so we wrote off right at the end of twenty thirteen, the receivables of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. Then let's, let's stay on the asset side. And twenty fourteen, cash is up to six thousand. Receivables are about fourteen. Uh, then we went to forty thousand, uh, in cash with very few receivables. Forty-nine thousand, still forty-six hundred in receivables. Forty-five thousand, last time seventeen and fifty-eight thousand, almost at the end of this past year. Uh, but if you look at the liability side, they had thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of payables. The next day, we dropped them down only because we were able to write some off with the help of some of the local vendors. Then the next year, we were able to pay some and write off some more. We got down to twenty fifteen and we're down to thirty-seven hundred dollars at the end of the year. Then the next year, a hundred dollars. The last two years, we don't owe anything except for taxes, which nobody gets away from that despite the Medicare. And if you look at our equity, it has gone from a minus five thousand up to seventy-one thousand now. So we, we, we made a lot of strides by doing a lot of creative things. Basically getting rid of expenses that we didn't need. But at the same time, we are also paying off bills from prior years. Uh, if you look at P and L, you can see that in twenty thirteen, they lost seven thousand dollars. Now this is on a cash basis. And then the next year, we're up slightly. Twenty fifteen, we got up more, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. So over the time period, we've netted a profit of fifty-one thousand almost dollars. And, and some of the things may seem strange if you look at the grants and donations. In twenty thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, the city's contribution was under donations. In sixteen, uh, Mr. England wanted his dues. And again in seventeen. So you'll see the donations more like. Then in twenty eighteen, it went back to the donations. And so that's why the eighteen dues went down by ten thousand. Because in those last three years, that's what we've been getting from the city was ten thousand dollars. When in twenty fifteen, we were getting twelve thousand six. In fourteen, it was twelve six. And twenty thirteen, it was eleven nine. Also in twenty thirteen, we even got eighty-five hundred dollars from the county, which we haven't had anything since then from the county. And we understand some of that. Also, uh, in twenty fif- uh, no, twenty fourteen and fifteen, between the two, we got twenty thousand dollars from Pioneer. As a matching grant, we had to raise money. In prior years, they had given every, every time you turned around, they were going to Pioneer asking for money. Uh, when we came in, um, we sat down, we in Denver, agreed that it would then be a matching. We had to raise the money quarterly and then they would, they would match it. So over that, that time period, we got twenty thousand from, from Pioneer. Of course, that's gone too. That was, that was the end of that. So I think we, we've done a lot of hard work to get where we're at. We still have need for a director because we've done almost all of this with volunteer help. We've had some payroll, but it's been minimal. Not nearly enough for somebody that should be running the place. So I, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer, but that's just what we wanted you to know.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. The reason we're here is that we want you to know the thought that you're supporting the chamber. We want to thank the board of director, the member of the board of director. We have a few here. We have Terry Marshall is our past president. Uh, see with thirteen fourteen and see the reason that I came back to the chamber. I want to thank you and I'm still here. And, uh, Mr. Last Day was the vice president, past vice president. Thank you for being there. We also have Kim Lucero. She was the, uh, treasurer for what thirteen fourteen. And, uh, myself, I've been in chambers in ninety-four, ninety-five to two thousand two. And then come back from two thousand fourteen to present. Uh, December thirty-first was my last as a president for two thousand seventeen and eighteen. And I just want to bring this to the council to see how hard that we work. We don't waste our money. Uh, we don't waste anything. And Mr. Israel, he'd been, uh, very grateful to donate his time. Uh, he's here to work with the chamber and guiding us and looking out. And two thousand fourteen, he was the finance advisor and we roped him in and he on the board. And every year he told me, this is my last year. No job, can't, not yet, not yet. So he's still here and he said, this is my last year. So, uh, that's why we're here. We want to thank Joe Bonato. He was our laser and we thank you for being there for us. And thank you so much. And I hope that the council continue to support the chamber. And, um, we, you know, the chamber, every time, every city, we need the chamber. We need the chamber to promote, not to the Trinidad, but Las Vegas County. So thank you so much for your time and, uh, got to us.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, we received a letter from the livestock association and they asked us to read that. So I'm going to read it now. This is concerning the acquisition of the Crazy French Ranch. Dear City Plan Commission, that's which written. Our members urge you to carefully consider the funding and use of the recent Crazy French Ranch purchase. Southern Colorado Livestock Association, established in eighteen seventy-two, is made up of ranching families who have long been good stewards of the land, caring for wildlife along with their cattle. These same families support the local communities, schools, and volunteer fire departments, not only with tax dollars, but additional donations of money and time. This piece of property encapsulating Fisher's Peak is started, is stated, as needing to be protected by the nature conservancy together with trust for public land to the tune of twenty-five point five million dollars. CBS News, four news out of Denver. Many of those dollars will ultimately come from state and local taxpayers. Our question is, protected from what? Protected from poachers? Already wildlife is illegal harvested from that area at a staggering rate. Opening up more access and trails certainly will aggravate this problem unless more department of wildlife staff come on board from taxpayers' dollars to stem this issue. Protected from development? If the city could not successfully see through the development of Cooper Canyon, any Jack Nicholson developed golf carts, how can we reasonably save the development of that very rugged area? The real issue is, the land is being protected from private ownership. Approximately thirty-six percent of our state is owned by the federal government, including sixty-eight percent of Colorado Forest. Colorado State Land Board controls nearly two million acres. Every acre of that comes out of private ownership increases the tax burden for all residents in Los Anas County. In Los Anas County, these entities take tax dollars out of the local budget. This has a direct effect on the ability to fund our local schools, to fund our schools, our fire departments, our law enforcement, our roads and bridges. The increased tourism and recreation will certainly help the city of Trinidad. But what is the city of Trinidad going to do to help fund the tax loss of this, to the schools? The fire department to other entities in the greater county? The fact is, all citizens of Colorado are paying for this purchase, including millions from the residents of Trinidad and Los Anas County. Who needs to be protected are the services that make up the quality of life in Los Anas County. Please don't throw that notion away chasing the Texan dollar on I twenty-five. Respectfully to the Southern Colorado Livestock Association. Uh, talked to Greg and he did a response. And I'm not sure if you're going to send it out before you send it to council.
I did send it to council.
We've already had.
We have?
Yeah.
And, uh, I, there's some misinformation in this letter, uh, as you can see. The tax dollars, uh, that they're, they're actually, you want to read the, uh, the response?
Sure.
Go ahead, read it.
Uh, this letter, this letter is my response to the letter we received by email from you as a representative of the Southern Colorado Livestock Association on Friday, February first, two thousand and nineteen. I assure you, like your, that like your members, the residents of Trinidad and the surrounding area also support their local community, schools, and fire departments, not only with tax dollars, but all, but with additional donations of time. The purchase of the Crazy French Ranch number one was negotiated by representatives of the Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy, and they are purchasing. While many people in Trinidad and supporters outside Trinidad look towards the future of the community and the area, looking towards the future in the community and the area, strongly support purchasing the ranch. Had the city not sought help from the Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy, it would be impossible for the city to purchase the ranch. The scope of this purchase far exceeds the capabilities of Trinidad. In your letter, you question why we are seeking, what we are seeking to protect the ranch from. The goal is protected from developments such as the development of Fisher's Peak Ranch directly across the, across Interstate twenty-five from the Crazy French Ranch. Fisher's Peak was subdiv- if Fisher's Peak was subdivided and sold off in thirty-five acre ranch per, excuse me. Fisher's Peak Ranch was subdivided and sold off in thirty-five acre ranchettes. Similar development has occurred in Spanish Peaks area and many other areas in this region. The thought of the Crazy French Ranch developing as nearly five hundred and fifty thirty-five acre ranchettes is not acceptable to many people in and around Trinidad. Fisher's Peak itself is considered by many in and around Trinidad as their mountain. But because it has been privately, because it's been private property, it has not been accessible to residents. By working with the Trust for Public Lands and the Nature Conservancy, we will be assured the ranch will remain as one parcel and available to the public in perpetuity. There are also many hunters in and around Trinidad who would like the opportunity to hunt the land, but for many years it has been unavailable to anyone other than trophy hunters willing to pay considerable sums for the opportunity. Through this purchase, local residents will have an opportunity to hunt the Crazy French Ranch. According to the Los Anas County Assessor in a recent public meeting, the current owner of the Crazy French Ranch number one pays about ten thousand dollars a year, per year in property taxes. It is important to note that neither the Trust for Public Land or the Nature Conservancy are property tax exempt. If the land becomes exempt in the future, it will have little or no effect on taxes received by the local entities. In addition, now that Los Anas County has a general sales tax, we believe the economic growth that will occur as a result of the purchase of the ranch will further enhance revenues of the county. As year-round recreation becomes more and more popular in Colorado, both for residents and visitors, the city of Trinidad sees considerable opportunity to develop recreation assets such as hiking, biking, public hunting, and greater promotion of other local assets such as Trinidad Lake State Park. Trinidad is much closer to Colorado residents from Cuello North than recreation opportunities in the western part of Colorado. We plan to develop that opportunity and see the Crazy French Ranch as a key asset in doing so. Please know that we are more than happy to speak with you in person about this subject and the opportunities the purchase will provide to Trinidad and the surrounding area. Sincerely, Philip T. Ray.
And, uh, one item that is not in there uh, is while that property is under the jurisdiction of the Nature Conservancy and such for the glance, there will be no loss of taxes to the Los Anas County Fire Departments. So.
I did have that.
Yeah, yeah.
If I may.
Sure. I believe the Southern Colorado Livestock Association, of which a, uh, local representative from District sixty-four is a primary member and was very vociferously outspoken against what we are doing at a recent gathering over at the College of State Legislators and, and, uh, governing boards, county and state and so forth. They speak to the preservation of a quality of life. Whose quality of life? In my mind, they speak to the preservation of status quo. And I think that what we are proposing with this purchase and with this plan, grandiose as it may be, but yet you've got to reach to land on the moon before you can do it. It's an all-inclusive method for us to be progressive, for us to share what is ours, but we can't reach it. So that we are able to reach it and nothing is lost. It is just a, a giant step forward for what we are trying to do to enhance the quality of all of our lives in this community and region and not preserve the status quo of a few in the eastern part of our capital. And I'm off my soapbox. Thank you.
I'd just like to note, if, if this was out there and go through, everything goes through as planned, who would be the title holder of this, of this property? Would it be Gocca? Would it be Lab Trust? Would it be the city of Trinidad? Who would, who would hold the title for this, this, uh, this purchase?
It's interesting that you bring up that subject because at the next meeting, um, we'll have a letter before you, that's a non-binding letter, that the city of Trinidad would be willing to accept the land, the ranch, when all of the management plans and everything are developed.
So.
The city would own.
Yeah, what will happen is after the, all the money is raised to pay T P L back and Nature Conservancy, I think at that point, then they will, that, the letter is talking about, uh, that would come back, they want to keep the property to the city.
So, so now the contract, whatever would say on page one, would say whoever, the title holder would say it's the city of Trinidad and then it goes back to page fifteen on the contract and it says different. Whatever it says on page one, that will be the title holder?
Eventually, not right away. Right, right away, those two organizations are purchasing the land. But they also haven't raised all the money to pay for the land yet.
So that's kind of an outreach thing that we're trying to deal with?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're going to work really hard to raise the money as quickly as possible.
And they've also promised us an endowment.
Yes, they're working on that also. Because, because the goal here is not to burn the city of Trinidad.
Right. So it might be on page six or seven, not page one. What a, what a legal. If it was you, it'd be on page one.
There's going to be a lot of details that will be going forth and explanations. Okay, all right. On to item five, consent agenda. Item five A, approval of regular meeting minutes of January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Item A, I forget the B and C. Approval of bills. Approval of payroll, January the twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen through February the eighth, two thousand and nineteen. An emotion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All vote, please.
Bonato.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Riego.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
McTain.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. What I'm going to want to just ask is that every now and then, within the approval of the bills and payroll, there might be questions that come up. Typically, we usually have a lot more items in the consent agenda than we do tonight. Would it be a consideration maybe to have a separate item on the approval of bills in case questions come up? Because otherwise, like right now, we've got to take it out of that sequence and apply it somewhere else. What are your thoughts? Are you going to keep it in the consent agenda and leave it as is?
I, I tend to have kind of a logical fair attitude about what we do here. I think we engage and hire and employ city manager to run the city. We, as you steer a big ship, we set a course and a direction. And I don't think that, um, it's necessarily our role to grade for punctuation and concern ourselves with details that are better left to those people who are charged with the responsibility to make it work. We, we hire people to do their job, let them do their job.
Or if we have questions.
And if there are unusual questions and, and enormous expenses. But day-to-day Monday kind of thing, we can argue ad nauseam and make a big deal out of it. Totally.
The reason why I'm here, because a couple of times, a couple of council people have had that question.
Correct. I've had expenditures come up, but they, they're very few and far between. So we can always pull it if there's situations arose.
All right. Item, now item six and seven, we have no public hearings. Item seven, it's a influence business. Item eight, this lady's business, eight eight. Item eight, this man's business, 88. Consideration of bid for project O2-2019 sanitary sewer point repair. That motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mike, get your...
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. If you recall, a while back, I came before you for a slip lining project for all the sewer mains in the Old Town side. They came down, they cleaned the lines, they cammed the lines. We were able to slip line some of the lines, but sewer mains were in worse shape than we had anticipated, so through all the videos that they ran, we went through them all. I should say Jenny has went through them all. She should take credit for that and watched a lot of... Yeah. The plots are, there's no plot to them. It's just watching them movies. Right. Anyway.
Sorry.
We suspended the slip lining until we could do this repair, point repair project, and there's actually nine, because we repaired one while they were doing the water main on Second Commercial. They already dug that up. We pulled it from this project and had them do it as change order to that project. So we went out to bid, and we received four bids. Three locals were really in line, one from Cuello was quite a bit more. We received bids anywhere from the low bid of $139,781.56 up to the high bid of $338,264.95. It's my recommendation that we take the low bid and get these sewer mains repaired.
Who is the low bidder, Mike?
MGM Excavating.
Michael Marcus.
Right. MGM.
How's doing this? She's done the battle. Yeah, who is it?
MGM is Michael Marcus. He's done emergency repairs for us in two locations now, and he came in with a low bid. Would they have any questions?
Are there significant differences between the hundred-some thousand and three-hundred-thousand to what's going to be done? There would cause us to add pause? Are we giving that which we need at a good price?
Yes, we are. What I add to that is the three locals were within, well...
Six thousand.
Six thousand, and then the next one was twenty-two thousand higher, and then the one from Cuello was way out of line. Doing our estimate, we were thinking it was going to be 175 to 200, so we're comfortable with these fancy...
To my earlier point about allowing staff to do their job. You're doing your job to our best interest.
Yes. Correct. Yes. Your best interest in citizens.
That's what I wanted.
And it's all licensed and bonded?
Yes. This will require, they required a bid bond, they supplied the bid bond, and then they'll have to have a performance and payment on as part of the agreement, so yes.
You're giving this out safe, this way. Any questions?
No. Do they have any idea when the timeframe for start to completion will be?
They're ready to go. They're waiting for this approval tonight, and then they have 10 days to, 10, 14 days to get their bonds in order and everything, and then we'll have the mayor sign the agreement should you award it, and they're ready to go.
Okay. Will this be like a late winter through the spring or summer kind of project?
Yeah, it's actually 90 days.
90 days?
Yeah. So again, we've had Second Street torn up for a little bit. Now we're going to have point repairs. One of the main ones is right at the intersection of Main and Commercial.
That thing's hard.
Right.
Questions? No. The question I have, and you mentioned the EIEF grant, is that a separate grant for $139,000 or is that...
That encompasses the $3 million grant we got for the water and sewer infrastructure.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. Call vote, please.
Bonato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago? Yes. Smolten?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes. Item eight B, resolution modifying the policy regarding procedures for investment to city funds and authorizing the mayor to execute second amended and restated indenture of trust with CSAFE. That motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
I can't.
This just gives us some additional options for investments.
The resolution before you is amending a resolution from 1992, hasn't been updated in quite a while. This is updating the policy so that we are able to invest with local government investment pools besides just locally. The original policy was allowing us to invest only locally. The local government investment pools recognized by the state and by statute are CSafe and Colorado Trust. There's a representative from CSafe here today, Mr. Bob Krug, and he has some information to hand out if you'd like, and if you have any questions for him.
Let's go ahead and hear from him, please. State name, please?
Bob Krug.
How do you spell his last name?
K-R-U-G.
Thank you. Pass this out.
So CSafe stands for Colorado Surplus Asset Fund Trust, was created in 1988. The whole concept was created in 1985 by the state legislature, and it was really with the idea of giving local governments, including municipalities, school districts, counties, and special districts, a safe option in addition to their local bank, essentially. CSafe operates very similar to like a money market fund that you would have in any bank. The difference is it's state-regulated, and it's basically a trust that was established strictly to invest public funds. So what you have before you, as far as the information goes, you have a fact sheet that highlights how CSafe is managed and run. I've been privileged to be the participant relations manager for 20 years, and CSafe manages two funds. The one called Cash is roughly about $2.5 billion in pooled funds, and that's made up of about 475 local governments throughout the whole state. And it operates at a dollar a share. The funds are 100% collateralized by the investments, and the investments are held at US Bank. The investments include, they're all state statute-driven, government securities, collateralized bank funds as well, but they have to be in the largest banks in the state that are actually rated AAA and AAA-rated on commercial paper. So that makes up the bulk of the securities behind the bank. So when governments access their accounts, it's through a securitized portal online. You can also call in to have a redemption. And so the funds come into US Bank, and then at noon, they're swept over to the trust side, is how it works from a mechanical perspective. You have Morgan Stanley, the fifth-largest bank really in the world, is the investment advisor to CSafe. Then we have LT Trust, who is the administrator and record keeper. Then you have Elevate Business Solutions, which is the organization I'm a part of. We are registered investment advisors as well. And so Cash, basically, if you put in $100,000 today, you can get it out actually the next day. There aren't any minimums in CSafe Cash. It's currently yielding 2.5%. The yield with Cash mirrors very closely to the Fed Funds rate, and that's where Fed Funds is right now. And it is rated AAA by Standard and Poor's. If you switch over to Colorado Core, it is what's called a cash-enhanced fund. It's similar to CSafe in every respect, including the investments. It just has the option to extend some of the investments a little bit longer than a year, and so that yield is 2.65. The other difference with Core is you have, you can get your funds the next day, so it works very similarly to like an ACH. So that's pretty much it.
Do you want to have any questions?
I want to know of Michelle.
That's what I was saying. Looking at Michelle, waiting to...
No, I asked her. This is the right thing to do. I really was going so long with her because...
I agree with Michelle. I agree with Michelle also.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Karen.
So FDIC, who insures it? Are the funds insured through US Bank?
So the funds, so CSafe is actually a public entity in and of itself. We have a PDPA number. So when the funds go in on the checking side, they are, the first $250,000, just like your funds, are FDIC. Then the balance are collateralized with the bank. However, generally, funds are in the, on the bank side maybe 24 hours. What we do from a management perspective is we sweep those over to the trust side, and then what Morgan Stanley does is they invest the cash. So you have, for every dollar that's in CSafe, it's 100% backed by the investments of CSafe. You're an undivided owner of the fund, essentially. I agree.
I agree with Michelle, but, you know, I just want to make sure that this money is safe, because 2008, Morgan Stanley didn't mean much to me.
Oh, okay. Well, that's true. That's true.
But it's dollar-for-dollar collateralized. It's not like they have a bunch of large bills sitting on top of a species somehow of government...
I get a little nervous, Michelle. I get a little nervous.
What she said.
So you have these yield rates for one day 70. It's not common in our bank accounts.
Correct.
But is, what's the comparison on this yield as opposed to what we're doing now? Is it substantially higher?
Essentially higher. I believe some of the money market accounts are, I want to say 0.4%. Might be a little bit higher in the past couple of months, but the last time when I looked, probably in September, I want to say it was around 0.4%. I don't know about most CD rates, but they were really, they're very low compared to this.
I think the CD rates are close to three, right? Not quite three, but I've seen like 2.6, 2.7 is what I see.
The rates for pretty long ones.
I just invested seven percent to Edward Jones, and I got some to three.
But those aren't the terms that need to be stepped out.
Right. These ones you can pull out the next day or...
Correct.
Yours is 25 years or something.
Really? I hope. It's not next day? Yeah. I was kidding.
We've had a stellar record for 30 years. So we've gone through all the ups and downs of the economy.
CSafe and Colorado Trust are both recognized by CML.
Do you typically have other communities that would diversify with both the Cash and the Core programs?
Yes. Most of our clients do both. So the idea would be, a lot of entities use us similarly to a manual sweep account. So ideally, you might keep two months' worth of operating within the local bank. If that any funds above the beyond that, you could put a certain amount on the cash side that you might want to access either monthly or every other month. And then the funds that you might not need for three to 18 months, that would be ideal for Core. And what Cheryl is proposing to do is to bring a higher level of efficiency for the community.
Okay. Other questions? No?
Nothing.
Who has nothing?
Thank you so much.
The only question I have is, and of course, like I said, you haven't had any issues in 30 years, right?
Correct.
And I saw in there, it says about earnings can be kept to pay off debts for the trust in the case that there was a...
We don't have any debts. I'm thinking where the state, the state actually created the language for the indenture, but we've never exercised any of that.
And the only question I have for council, and this is something is, I know that this is a good investment for us, is going in that direction. How does that play with us supporting our own community? That's the only thing that I question. I'm not sure what you guys think.
I would love to support our community as long as we can get yielding dividends that are what we should be getting. I think, you know, it's one thing to go out and give money to local investment companies, but it's another thing to where we take what we have and make more money for our community. And I think that's just a logical, you know, step we should be making for our people.
And it's not as though we're going to abandon them, we're just going to include the offerings that are before us. We'd be fortunate enough to take advantage of this, and at the same time, we can help the working relationship with local people.
It'll give you more leverage.
And I bring it up just because the community's...
You've got to respect that, but at the same time, you shouldn't be limited by it.
Right. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. There's no further discussion. All vote, please.
Bonato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Smolten?
Yes.
Smolten?
Yes. Item eight C, first reading of ordinance, repealing and reenacting. Would you please read that ordinance, please?
An ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 2-60 of the Trinidad Municipal Code that adjusts the codes on the Trinidad Historic Main Street Board.
We have someone introduce. Oh, he's just introducing. Okay. And he read her, and we're okay. That motion, please. Second.
Second.
And that's going to be center hearing date for the ordinance, to read or to hear the ordinance at 6 o'clock on February 19, 2019.
So just if you have any questions for us, the intent of this is to bring Main Street into the city as an official board. They've been assigned a board liaison, which they're very excited about, and have staff liaison through Development Services. So they'll be here to provide testimony. Do you have any questions about the intent?
Questions, I guess. Appropriate and lawful here?
Okay. We'll present it to the public here.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
No, sir. No, thank you.
Call vote, please.
Make the motion.
Joe? I did.
Oh, okay. Bonato?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Smolten?
Yes.
Smolten?
Yes. Item D, request for Mont Santa Rafael Hospital to waive landfill fees associated with renovation to $212,715. Could I have a motion, please?
I saw.
Second? Second? Discussion. We'll start with you.
I just, you know, about three or four, I don't know, three or four months ago, there was a situation, and I was involved with, that I found out about waiving fees there at landfill for another con... for another contractor and developer, okay? And in addressing this problem, or address of this deal, was that I was very happy with this. But I am happy to see that I was brought to council this time instead of having somebody from the city staff just waiving this. I'm very complimentary of what the hospital is doing. I think it's a great, great ordeal. We have to have a good medical community. We have to have good doctors and good nurses and good staff. But about a month ago, this council, and myself included, raised our landfill issues with our community. We had to raise our people and our community for their landfill and trash use. Now I look at it this way, you know, like I said before, I was very unhappy with what happened before. I think that this has opened Pandora's box, or a box of worms, or whatever you want to call it. But to me, you know, we have local contractors here. We have our people that are here that live month to month on paychecks. We have discussed, and landfill is really my, my bag between water and the landfill I really worry about. And we as a council and we as city staff have discussed our landfill for many months of what's going to happen? How many years do we have with our landfill? Is it going to be twenty-seven years, going to be thirty-one years, whatever? But to get to the point of view is that, you know, I, I feel great that it is an undue respect to our citizens that we have to raise our landfill prices to them. Our local contractors that are here, they pay the regular price. You know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm, it's just a thought of, of what's going on here. We have to look at our landfill and say, all right, you know, we're trying to raise the cost to our citizens and to rebuild or, or what's going to happen in the future with our landfill. And by doing this, I, I, I think it's just, you know, it's just a popping the arm that everybody else is going to come and say, we need to waive the landfill fees for construction. And I think it's very, very, I know, I know Mr. Tucker personally. I think he's a great man, he's a great director of our hospital, he knows what he's doing. But the problem is that I as a councilman can't see letting a developer that's worth thousands, millions of dollars to waive the landfill, landfill fee and our people and our local contractors have to pay. And it's just unfair to me, so, you know, that, that's what I have to say. And I, you know, I don't, I, I didn't introduce myself, but I don't know your name, sir, but you know.
I'm David Rollins, I'm the CFO of the hospital.
Good.
So I'm here for John today, he's at a conference.
But I guess with all due respect to you, sir, it's a wonderful thing that we're doing, but I, it's just a point of view, my point is that, you know, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, so it's just, that's my thought, Art.
So part of your bid to, for this renovation of the hospital, was the landfill fees not part of the bid already? Are we looking?
Part of our budget.
Part of your budget, right. So you have a bid from contractors?
Right, and this is part of, part of our cost, so this would reduce the hospital's cost.
Okay.
Right, so the hospital is, is currently taking out a loan, a total project costs about thirty-three million. And so we were asking the city to waive their landfill fees to help.
Bring it down.
Help raise some of that.
What's the total amount that we're raising?
Twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
Is all going into the hospital?
Yes.
No more questions?
I agree with Mr. Benado. I, I, I think that you guys are going to be doing some great things there. I do have issues though when, you know, you're sitting on county property and you are a rural hospital, which are kind of going the wayside in a lot of areas of the country. But at the same token, this should have been budgeted into your proposal and, you know, to come for us for twelve thousand out of a thirty-three million dollar total project, I think is kind of insulting to the people we just raised our prices on. Especially the small contractors who are pulling trash. I mean, I have my own issues with the hospitals because we can't have babies there. You know, I know it's a financial restraint that causes that issue, but it's hard for us to grow a community when we can't grow our community. And you're building an enhanced hospital and it's still not going to have an OBGYN there to oversee birthing. That's just my personal two cents. I stand with Mr. Benado on this and I, I think that this should have been budgeted and should be, since it's only twelve thousand dollars, it's something that should be paid.
One, we are a public entity as well. I mean, Trinidad Area Health Association was formed in seventy-two to take over from the sisters of charity. And they provided the healthcare in this community. So Tahoe for the last almost fifty years has done that job, right? And we've never came, hardly ever came and asked for any money. We don't get any tax money, which every other rural hospital in the state does, right? We don't get a dime. Hospitals come very close many times over the years to not even surviving, right? But we've been able to pull it through. We've now gotten ourselves to the point where we can build a new hospital, but we're going to have to borrow. And we're going to go into debt for a long time, for thirty years we'll be in debt. So that's why we come to the city council and said, can you guys help? We're not asking, we're not asking you to, to give us a quarter cent sales tax. We're not asking for, you know, half million dollars a year to support it. All we did was say, can you help us with the landfill?
I understand that and when you did ask your bill levy, I voted for them. I, I'm all about that, but.
Having, having OB has nothing to do with how big we built the hospital. We can't get docs to cover it, right? You need at least on average, what the standard is, two hundred and fifty babies a year. When we quit OB ten years ago, a little over ten years ago, we were doing fifty. The whole county's only doing a hundred. So you can't get docs who will come here and actually manage the program. And that's why everybody's having to go to level one. I mean Lamar, Springfield, Raton, Raton does, but they subsidize it heavily. And they have issues with coverage. So that's, that's the reason why we don't have OB.
I understand, there's financial logistical issues, I get that, but.
Let's just stick to the financial costs.
Right.
Well, I on the other hand feel that the hospital is a very integral part of this community. The first thing somebody asks when they want to come to Trinidad is what is your hospital like? I mean, without a hospital, you might as well close up the exits going into Trinidad because you'll have no economic development whatsoever. I've noticed I've, my youngest daughter, we missed two weeks from her being born in the new hospital and I tried, I really tried, but it just didn't work. I've seen that hospital from its very beginnings, even when the sisters had it, up to today. And I get a sense that not only is that hospital surviving, it is thriving. And there is a sense with even hospital staff, they've got a spring in their step, there's something about it. I wish I could point, put my finger on it, but there's a sense of, of accomplishment, of success with all of you and I, I applaud all of you. If we can give money to one day events, we can give money to, to all these other people. Twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars is not much. I only ask that if council approves this, that you work with staff and make sure that you do the very least possible impact on the landfill that you have. That's the only thing I ask. I mean, we're partnership. The hospital is just not another entity. We need that hospital. That's all I have to say.
I have a tendency to agree with Karen with all sensitivity to yours and Joe's position. And that would be more valid in a perfect world, but we don't live in a perfect world, we live in one where we're always trying to scratch out an existence and all of us pull in our collective weight together to support the hospital to the two and a tw- twelve thousand. I'm more concerned about five hundred and forty-five tons of debris than I am the twelve thousand dollars and, yeah. And what that's going to do to the life expectancy of our landfill. And will it geometrically multiply in the long run when we have to contend with five hundred and forty-five tons of debris? But at the same time, if we don't, from my previous work experiences in my life, many times I was at that hospital, watching them work their magic on people that I had picked up on the road. And I have been out there in the middle of the night thinking I was dying. And I should want them to keep their doors open, whatever that takes. I support it. Now, from my perspective, I guess to Mr. Benado's and to Lopez's point, it's more, it sounds to me like it's more the principle of the matter of what you guys bring up. And I have a little different point to solve maybe some of the principal part of that. I know it's very minimal, but with council maybe considering just splitting that. I know it's very minimal, but it would still retain some of the principle of, of what we've been trying to do and at the same time have it on lower cost. The other thing I was going to recommend is whoever the demolition people are up there, have you checked with, there's a couple of other areas around town where they're depositing, like some concrete stuff? And they're just trying to fill in some holes. That would probably take that. And there's one right outside of town, so, but anyway, I thought I'd bring that up if that's something that you've checked into.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say one other thing is that, you know, it says here, we have also received a mass estimate that we'll have five, five hundred and eighty tons of fiberglass asbestos containment, containing material at thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. But understand that it cannot be disposed in our landfill. That's quite right, you can't dispose of it. So you're talking thirty-four thousand dollars that you're going to pay another company, right, to dispose of this?
Yeah, we have, we have to take it north where they have the burners, where they can dispose of.
All right, so you're actually going to pay these guys thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars and you're worried about a twelve thousand dollar bill in our landfill? The wood, you know, the reason I'm bringing this up again is that, you know, since the last dump we had out there and it had more, like the mayor said, about concrete pillars and big old things that were taking up most of our landfill, that's what I worry about. You know, we worry about things, Mr. Beach said there was a contractor that was supposed to go out there and break the, break the concrete and chunk it down and do whatever. It's still out there, but anyway, but that's not the point. The point of view is that we as a community have to look at, like Karen says, twelve thousand dollars isn't nothing. Twelve thousand dollars isn't nothing, Karen? You go down and, and talk to some of the old people that live from paycheck to paycheck. When we go out there to dump our trash, we have to pay for it. You pay as you go and that's the way I look at it. You know, if you got the money to do this, do it, it's wonderful, I'm glad. But to protect our landfill, I'll stand up here and I'll protect our landfill and our water till, till hell freezes over, but the motion is that, that's what my concerns are.
Yes.
As a, as a way to deal with this a little bit differently, to me, what the hospital's really asking for is a donation on the part of the city. And it's also reflects why I've been recommending that the landfill become a utility. Because the city can make the landfill whole by doing a donation from the marijuana tax or something like that, where that money goes to the landfill. It doesn't lose the money, the landfill would still receive the fees. And it would be, it would be considered a donation to the hospital's construction effort rather than forgiving the fees.
That's not what you said two weeks, a couple of weeks ago when you said our landfill is, we have to prepare for the future. And the only way where the landfill is going to pay for itself is we up the wages, up, up the rates for our local.
And I'm saying, this would make the landfill whole. You would take money from one of the outside funding sources and you would put it in the landfill. So it would, the fees would be made. Rather than further burdening the landfill. Right, the fees would be paid. Because I think it's important with, you know, whether this is a true utility or not yet, it's important that when you make decisions that affect the utilities, that the utilities are in full.
And I really believe that, you know, and Karen, you mentioned something about lessening the impact of the landfill. And that's why I brought that suggestion is for you or whoever the company is to look to see if there's any planning cells that they could deposit some of the concrete that is there. As a matter of fact, one is, likes it right outside of town, and he's been trying to fill in that hole for the last couple of years. And I mean, there's concrete by piles out there, so, you know, if you can look into that, that would lessen the impact on our landfill.
We must include Blazin.
And that's actually, I think it's Blazin?
Is it?
I think it's Blazin.
It's Blazin?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, he's one person that you might want to talk to and that would lessen the impact quite a bit. If they're, they may want to be the hauler to their place, but at the same time it would be less impact on our landfill.
And this is also one of the reasons why we should have an inert landfill.
Right.
So that this is not treated like municipal cell.
Whether it's paid for by the hospital or not, we're having the same amount going into the dump. The impact on the dump's going to be the same, it's the bottom line, it's being paid or not. That's the only difference.
Well, the other thing, like the thought that I had is that, so that, it's the principle behind it. I'm not sure council would want to consider splitting that in half, just for the principle. If you guys wanted, just leave it as this.
You're taking consideration, you're taking consideration of what's going on at that landfill with the operator that's out there. Go talk to that young man, the operator. Is somebody listening to me or am I talking to myself?
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I said you take in consideration of the, of the, of the employee that's out there at that landfill, running that, running that scrape and that over every day and see how much trash is going in that, that has to be from the local people that we take care of. This is just an extra addition compared to the other contractor that dumped in there, that makes more, more work for our, that employee out there that has to do out there for eight, ten hours a day, so, I don't know. It's up to, it's up to council, what the law.
Man, I would be amenable to finding some middle ground. I would be. If you are willing to find a place to dispose of the concrete where someone wants it, that would, you know, definitely remove a lot of that weight and tonnage that was going into our landfill because that is something that we have been discussing a lot lately. We've got to make sure that we're getting prepared for a, you know, closure of this particular site. And then only that, but then the maintenance of it and also finding another place for us to take our refuge. So I, I can see where, where you're coming from about, you know, that the fees are really not that much. They're, they're really not, you're absolutely right. But you brought a good point, it's like you're concerned about the actual debris going into that and that is one of our big concerns. That is something that we've got to be mindful of, otherwise we're not doing our job and our people. I like your idea a lot about taking some of the, the concrete and disposing it in a hole where someone wants it. And if you're willing to do that, I'd be willing to work with you.
I'm not aware of those alternatives and so that would really be up to the, the construction experts.
Is that necessary?
But if, but if it's, if it's available to us as an option, I know we would take, take advantage of it.
Well, that's encouraging to do that, but does that open environmental concerns? That whole bureaucratic nightmare about taking the stuff? Yeah. Well, that would, that would, that would be between the contractor and whoever would receive the product. Well, I understand, that's what I'm saying. You and I can do something, but if the federal government says it's an environmental issue and they're going to regulate that, you and I could watch the, and, and my question is, are we creating added adversity? But we don't know until we try it.
But you know, really, Rusty's absolutely right. Whether or not we give the hospital the money or not, that's, that trash is going into our landfill. So the bottom line is, do we want to give the hospital twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars?
As a donation, that's basically what it does. And there, for someone who's very in earnest in raising their hand in the audience, I, I just wanted to let you know that. She's trying to wrap this. Don't take comments from the audience in situations like this, it's usually the resolution and whoever it's affecting. Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
So what do we do now? We have, we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, we can either table it and find out information or we can move forward with what.
Well, I would amend the motion to say that we should not waive the fees, but what we should do is take it out of the marijuana money and pay the landfill. So, which is, which is right.
To pay the land.
Right, to pay for it.
Pay the landfill.
Yeah, so that's why landfills need more.
Correct. But we still have the issue of seven hundred forty-five, five hundred and forty-five tons of concrete.
Well, it's gonna go there anyway.
Unless we can work something out.
Correct.
Well, yeah, I, I see, but that's good faith.
Is there some way that we could say to this guy to break that concrete down? I mean, as far as, you know, like I say, somebody or a contractor or somebody that's supposed to break that concrete for us, that was your, I mean.
Which, which concrete, I'm sorry.
I don't know. That concrete that was brought out there to the landfill by the other, I'm not mentioning no names.
Well, let's go ahead and stick with this issue. That would be this particular.
Could, could we get a contractor to do that?
But we can, certainly. We, we actually did quotes, but that's, that's another deal.
Okay.
If I may, the concrete, the asbestos-containing concrete that is coming from the hospital, they've been asked to leave it in as large of chunks as possible to minimize the contamination. So by leaving it in as big a chunks as it can, they still have to wrap it in plastic. They still have to bring it to us in plastic.
That's not going to ruin the landfill.
That, I'm not sure, because the twelve thousand seven fifty is the first time I've heard that number. It was just a minute ago when it was brought up. I've not heard that number before. I didn't know that that was a number that was involved in this situation. The five hundred and forty-five tons is also another number I had not heard before.
Well, we better table this motion, yeah, because if you don't know where that's going, we don't know.
Another concern is.
I'm sorry, it says it even a thing. They understand they have five hundred and eighty tons of asbestos-containing material, and they understand that it can't be deposited in our landfill. It says it.
That's fine. That'll all be tested before it's dropped anyway. Well, it would have to be tested by a certified asbestos testing unit, and then the demolition permit obtained from the Department of Public Health and Environment.
Okay. I have one last question for the gentleman. When do you plan to start breaking ground and, and moving on this?
Somebody's going to.
Demolition is, yeah, we've been working on our abatement for the last three months, and we anticipate demolition starting February eighteenth or as soon thereafter.
Okay.
Okay. Do you wanna make the motion to amend?
Yes, I would amend the motion to instruct the city manager to take the twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars out of unallocated marijuana monies and to pay or defray the landfill fees that are discussed, that are the subject of this discussion.
It was very.
I second it.
If, if based on what you're talking about with potential other dump sites, you could say up to that.
Yes.
Okay, fair enough, up to that.
Okay, so we have a first, we have a second. Any discussion on that amendment?
We're good, council?
Call them up.
Did we have a first and a second?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thanks. We're good.
You had a confused look. I wanted to get clarity.
Yes, we're good, we're good.
Could you call him in, could you call a vote on him?
Benardo?
Yeah, that money goes to the landfill, yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, we have a first and second actually on the waiving of that landfill. So we've already had discussion. Could you call a vote on that, please?
Uh, it would be.
No, we have.
That motion has been amended.
As encompassed as well.
That's right. That's right.
You don't have to act on that one.
Right, it's a procedural matter.
Okay. So just move on. Okay, I thought we had to do a.
But I.
After the first one.
Okay.
Item E, resolution amending the policy regarding the allocation of expenditures proceeds of the city's five percent marijuana sales tax revenue. Have a motion, please?
Five percent.
Five percent?
Not five cents.
Yeah, five cents.
Five percent.
Five cent tax.
Five percent marijuana sales tax revenue. Have a motion, please?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Wanted to do something on that, just for the audience. Audience's information, which is items one through four on this. And this is the resolution on this. The pay-go process is hereby established where in only actual proceeds of the five percent marijuana sales tax will be distributed. Sixty-five percent of the expenditures from the five percent sales tax will directly benefit the city of Trinidad's operations to payment for projects, programs, and debt service that have been delayed due to the inability to budget and pay for said costs before institution of the tax. The city manager is authorized to allocate expenditures up to fifty thousand dollars for individual purchases, projects, and programs. Item three, thirty percent of the proceeds will go, will be dedicated to a reserve fund for any day fund for emergency purposes, recognizing that situations will exist at some point in the future wherein there will be need for a reserve fund. Item five, five percent agency level support will be allocated to Trinidad nonprofit seeking one-time or to short-duration funding. Funding per, per agency will be considered for up to three years and shall not exceed fifty percent of the organization's total annual operating cost. The city manager is authorized to allocate expenditures up to three thousand dollars for individual subsidies. That's the way those, that would read in, because right now, the way it is, is sixty, thirty, and ten. The way it is right now, so this changes it on that, like that five percent, so. First and second on that. Any discussion from council? Mr. Ted? No. Karen?
No, sir.
That's right.
No, but just the idea was that, you know, you're gonna make easier judgment in leading people off of these things. In other words, we can get more upfront, but, you know, we better be leading them so that's all, for year three. I think that's the only comment. But I think this should be added to here.
Good.
Good. Call a vote, please.
Benardo?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item F, space to create Trinidad government agreement. Could I have a motion, please?
Still votes.
Second?
Second.
There's a discussion starting with Ms. Marshall. What do you have?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Tara Marshall, Development Services Director for the city. I'm accompanied by Andrew Michelson with Art Space as our project manager. You're used to seeing Andrew in front of you. Also with us this evening is Lucas Koski. Lucas has been working on our project for about a year. He works on the project management part as we segue through construction and into ramping up to actually putting people in the living spaces. Lucas will be working with us locally to make sure that happens according to plans. And Amanda Cortez, it's really exciting to have her with us this evening. She works through a fellowship program with Art Space. She has a local government background, and she's been working on our project behind the scenes at the Canadian Conference Awards. So we have three items before you tonight. We're already making significant changes to these documents as we've given them to you. We have, are gonna go through them in theory and in concept and get some feedback from you, but these documents are changing as we're going. We're really close to closing, so Andrew's gonna come up and give us an update on where we stand on the project right now.
My, my concern in this with all these changes, it's not gonna delay the project? Because we're trying to get this off the ground early in the next month?
I'm gonna turn this over to Andrew to, to address that concern, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just counsel. I'm glad to be back here after, you know, considerable effort. And, you know, I recall, of course, standing in the street when we received our tax credit award so many months back, saying, it's gonna be quiet. We're working behind the scenes, and that work is really coming to a culmination. So, to your immediate question, Mr. Mayor, these, these revisions are not to the materiality of the documents themselves, but actually clarifying the dollars and, you know, making the comments and everything be in the right places. But we wanted to make sure we came in front of you so that we have at least general approval, or at least the direction as to the documents, if we come back either in front of council for final versions, or if you direct the city manager to approve with advice of council. However you approach that, it's not going to get in the way of our closing. But these are three documents that we will need to have executed and approved by the time we actually ink all the documents and enclose on the, the total project. So I'm happy to take comments and questions about the three documents as we move through them. But I do just want to, you know, reiterate, as we said many times before, how honored we are to be, you know, leading the development effort here and to be so close to the finish line. Generally speaking, we are, you know, in final stretches of document approvals for planning and permit. We are out to finalize bids with the subcontractors who are already identified and confirm that the contract value is final, firm committed, and otherwise inked and ready to go. Partnership agreement with our investor is in close to final form, relying also on some of these documents that we need executed by the city. And then, of course, the various pots of money that are already committed and have recently been increased through, you know, the state, the city of Trinidad, and others. The, the development agreement in front of you will facilitate flowing those funds into the project so we can actually get going, swing some hammers, and see some work getting underway. So any of that that you'd like to discuss or specific questions really to the documents, I'm happy to address any of those. I wanna make sure that everyone is understanding very clearly where we are now and what we need to do to move forward. But I would say generally that you will end up at the end of the day with forty-one units of housing as we talked about, about twenty thousand square feet of space available for commercial use. There's still some, you know, discussions about how we, you know, finish all of that space, of course. But we'll be at Main Street, Elm Street, as we've discussed before. And the overall project, as we presented, is gonna be moving forward. And I expect that we could by the end of this month be in a position to close and start construction in March. So that's where we're really gonna move towards.
So for the development agreement, before we go forward, let me address one major change we're making. There's been several lawyers, by several, I mean six or seven, involved in drafting these documents, and every single legal counsel has asked, yeah.
Like, are you still lawyer jokes?
Yeah. So every single legal counsel calls the project something different. So one of the things we've identified is in the different documents, you're seeing the project referred to in different terms. So let me clarify. We're going to formalize these. One of the changes that's coming back to you is where we are aligning the name in all of these. The name of the entire project is Space to Create Trinidad.
They're removing the Trinidad Art Center project?
Yes, we are.
That's one of my questions.
Yeah, so, so we're having, so the entire project is Space to Create Trinidad. Within Space to Create Trinidad, there are the Trinidad Art Space Lofts, and that encompasses the living, and there is the Trinidad Art Space Community Center, and that encompasses the twenty thousand square foot of space. So in some of these documents, you're going to need to be talking about just the twenty thousand square feet, and that's where we'll refer to it as, pardon me, I believe it's the Trinidad Art Space Community Space. We're using the word space. So when we are talking about that, we'll call it Trinidad Art Space Community Space. And when we're talking about things that are relative to just the living space, we'll call it Trinidad Art Space Lofts. But through the entire document, Space to Create Trinidad will be the entire campus. So that is a major change, and we'll roll those documents out to you within a week that have that update, okay? Thanks.
Mr. Ted? Well, it, it's a changing, evolving document, I recognize. I, I understand. As I'm looking at it, it requires a signature from the mayor, one from Art Space folks, and that suggests to me it's legal and binding in its form. But you're telling me it's continuing to change, and if I missed the understanding before, I apologize. But what we're here tonight is to approve and ratify, yes? Right, your vote?
I think we have two options in front of us. One is that you approve it conditioned upon the city manager and city attorney reviewing the details and agreeing that that's appropriate. If they feel like those details require it to bring it back to you, then we would be in front of you on the nineteenth.
Chris, go clear.
The other option is to table it to the nineteenth, okay? We table it. Neither will affect the closing. Okay, I have no questions.
Cool. I think everything should keep progressing.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. Are we going to have an option under fifteen years to purchase this for a dollar? It sort of says in the summary.
We are, and it.
But then, what about any liabilities? Doesn't the document say that we assume liabilities?
So, it's a good question. So the, the option that we'll execute at closing now would give the city the right to purchase the entirety of that, that commercial condominium, which is the Art Space Trinidad Community Space. So that first floor, Main Street, extending all the way to the back at first. So that first floor is, is going to be a new condominium. The residential will be separate. So you'll have an option to purchase that. The way it has to be written for tax law is that it can't be for zero because it's a disregarded sale. So it will say fair market value, assumption of debt, or has to be negotiated by the parties at that time. Something along those lines, and that will give you the rights clearly to purchase it. And what that means is when the investor walks away and they know they're gonna have any investment concerns, we in Art Space and the city can say it is yours, and the debt that goes with it is self-debt, and no one has to repay that.
Okay, so we're buying it for fair market value or for a dollar?
The document says a dollar.
If this says a dollar, now Andrew's, his side is saying fair market value.
Right here, for the term of one dollar. Now they're for, for one dollar.
Okay, so we'll need to clarify that. I.
Right, because I.
This is, this is.
I think you wanted to show that to your tax attorney.
Yeah, so my, my expectation is that it is fair market value, assumption of debt. So the debt that we're talking about here is really the city's funds that you're putting into your own vehicle. So it would be assumption of the four million dollars that we're using as we're structuring that as self-debt in the project. So there's not actual sort of lost paid debt that we're gonna owe with it, but for tax purposes, it will look like that.
Do I like to see that language?
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, I'm a little confused in the last three weeks. I'm sorry, is it my turn?
Yeah, it is. Well, are we, are we discussing all three items, or just, I think we'll be discussing.
This is the development agreement right now.
Oh, okay.
And as we go on, yeah. Because you just, actually, that last question had to do with item the next one.
Yeah, I haven't purchased. All right, I have nothing else in the involvement.
Nothing for me.
Nope.
I thank you.
But it is brought up in the discussion.
I'm glad you clarified that. Art Center project.
Right.
That's covered. Agreement two point three, it says, I will need guidance of how and when funds will be levered to Art Space. Could you clarify what that?
We did rewrite that, mayor, and it will say something to the effect of the city of Trinidad will manage the funding with all of the grant agencies per the contract we have with the grant agencies. And as that money is reimbursed to the city, we will provide that to the partnership.
Okay. Last question I have for you, Andrew, is I talked to the gentleman Gibbs a few weeks back, and he said that the actual drawings have not been completed. Are they complete at this point in time?
I believe that we actually received them at the city today, so you should have final permit drawings. And to that question, there were revisions required for planning and permit approvals that we're incorporating in the drawings to issue for final, and then those are taken back for final blessing permits from all the sites.
We're really close to approving those, the permit review.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, in the last meeting, we talked about this, and we were talking about a start of construction, and you say you would like to see things going by February or so.
By first of.
Or, or we said first of February or something, and nailed the impound and now. Now I heard Angie say this isn't going through till March now, till another month shot in the back end.
I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be in position to close on all the financing and all the documents be approved by the end of this month. And really what happens is everything distills to that final closing point, and once everyone is blessed it, the next day we get notice to proceed to the contractor.
I think as far as, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we'd like to see something going on here. You know, and now, now it's kind of a disheartening deal where you say, well, we got another month shot, shot in the back end. Now we can't start that much, March or whatever.
Yeah, because I think the last, we talked about it, we said we targeted financial closing for the end of January.
Yeah, and that's why we wanted nails, pound it, or something by.
Because like you're right, the longer it goes, the, the costs continue to rise.
So financial closing will happen in the next few weeks, but, but really to begin construction, we have to have the building permit issued, and Van Leeuwen is just now finishing his review, and it will go to city staff, I believe they did earlier today, to review. So it, it will take us just a little bit of time. Respectfully, we go through the plans. But as soon as we're able to do that, then if that coincides with financial close, then we should be able to begin construction of one permit.
What I would like to see is, once everything's, like I said, blessed and all that stuff is, I think you need to tell your contractor, I would like to see, do they mobilize within ten days, twenty days? I'm not sure if you have that in place.
Yeah, so our expectation, Mr. Mayor, is that we, well, first of all, I've already given Gibbs and the abatement contractor general notice that we expect to have closing by end of February. Notice to proceed immediately following, so that we give Gibbs the general timeframe to get mobilized and come up and get on site. The abatement at Main Street has to occur before Gibbs can mobilize and we get demolition within that site. But they can mobilize and get ready and start doing work on Elm. So I do expect you to see stuff moving within, you know, probably two weeks. You'll see folks on site. There's permits that need to be issued on abatement, and folks actually have to mobilize and get here on the Elm Street site. But we want to get ready and underway as soon as, you know, the notice procedure is issued. So it, it won't be the next day in all likelihood, but they will have the rights to be on site and start working that next day.
And then talking to Gibbs, talk to them a little bit about the possibility of any other contractors. And then talking to Gibbs, talk to them a little bit about the possibility of any other contractors locally. I'm not sure if they're still planning on doing that in the near future, so.
Yeah, so the expectation has been that once those drawings are issued in their final permit review forms, as they are now, there will be sort of a final, you know, solicitation to all final bidders. And then any others who are interested, I know that there have been local and regional sub-suites that thought that they couldn't participate or the window had closed. Gibbs has continued to field those calls and want to make sure that, you know, both there's participation availability to bid and then also the labor to be included and then also government giving the best price in the cost they can.
One of the things, as a matter of fact, I talked to Tara about, and of course, we have such a short window timeframe now. How possible is that to get other bids from local contractors? And even to get them in a room like this and explain it in bidding process? At least give them the opportunity so that would have to be done really short term here.
Prior to closing, it would. We have passed on three.
Because I guess I just don't, one of the problems that we've always had is that sometimes contractors come from out of town and the local people are saying, they get an opportunity. At least they'd like to see an opportunity.
If they can eat.
Yeah, at least if they can. Don't want to hold up the project, but I think it's.
Yeah, I think it's a fair point and it's something we've always been sensitive to. And I know there have been a number of interested bidders who've been in discussion with Gibbs. And some of it has to do with, you know, the actual scopes of work, that either there is an expertise or the scale of what we're doing is larger than can be handled locally. But we've really been encouraging that. And I think if some of those contracts are left going forward, there might still be some opportunity. I know that some of the finished trades, particularly there's good local presence. So we're really banking that on that as well.
All right, let's go ahead and get a vote on the development agreement.
And in your, in your motion, would you mind clarifying that what you're doing is approving the subject to the city attorney and city managers signing off on the, on the final documents? And knowing that the city manager and city attorney will be bringing that back to you if they feel like anything in the document that changes requires you to look at.
Or the second alternative is waiting to have it come back as a completed document.
And either way, it doesn't impact the closing. But before you call the vote, I just want to make sure we've clarified which one we're doing.
Who, 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 first, who voted the first time?
Well, before, before we do that, are you interested in assuming that responsibility? We're down for a big load on you guys to do this and before our next meeting, come back and tell us what you think. Or wash your hands of the whole thing and then have a completed project when you come back.
I don't like this, one more draft of the language, honestly.
I think it makes sense to table it and continue to.
Thank you. Somewhere in my comment was a question.
No, no, I understand. I just, with all due respect, I think it's best to do it that way.
And I think it's true for all three agreements.
Sure, right.
Exactly.
So then you want to make a motion to table all three agreements.
I make a motion that we table all three agreements until the next meeting on February, no, not later than February nineteenth. For some reason, we need to call a special meeting on that.
Have these development agreement, option to purchase, and match a lease agreement. Okay? So we have a motion to table, second?
Second.
Do we need to address the motion that was already made before we move to a second motion?
We amended it. We amended it.
All right. Right. Counsel McCray, there was just asking that very question. It's amended, I think.
Doesn't it have to be amended by the person who made it? Someone can amend a motion over someone else's motion.
If you all agree to it, you get it, yes.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right.
Call a room, please.
Benato?
Yes.
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Missay?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Frigo?
Yes.
Got work?
We would, and respectfully, we didn't get to discuss a couple of the things that are in the option to purchase in the master lease. Would it be okay if we, we kind of discussed that one?
I think we should, I gotta discuss that if anything else comes up. Let's go ahead and at least address those items. Go ahead.
So the option agreement, do you want to address the master lease first and then flow to the option?
The legal structuring of our acquisition is complicated, to say the least. What we had always intended was that we would simply convey the condominium outright to the city of Trinidad, you know, for scrutiny, excuse day one. What we've discovered, once all the lawyers have been involved, which I can say because I'm a lawyer myself, once everyone gets involved, the subtleties of tax law and these conveyances brought to light that we can't actually lease the property to the city and have an option to convey it to you if it's more than fifty percent of the leasable square footage to a nonprofit and yada, yada, yada. We can master lease that space to the city with an option and DOLA requires that we have an option. Because as those funds fall through, we need to have this municipal ownership. So we will eventually convey the entire condominium to the city under this option. That's not as fine as DOL. But to still use the tax credits, we can't lease the entirety of it day one. So what you have in front of you is a master lease for that front portion. What you don't have in front of you is a master lease that will go to art space for the rear portion, that basically garage structure, which currently is expected to be mothballed until we figure out exactly how to build that out. What we will do, as your partner's going forward for fifteen years, is act essentially as a proxy and lease that space under that same city program and still convey all of it to you under this option in fifteen years when the tax credit compliance period has elapsed. So that's why we've layered these two together. They sort of go hand in hand.
So to summarize, we have a master lease that is the length of fifteen years for eleven thousand nine hundred square feet of space, which comprises the front of the building. And then we have an option to purchase at fifteen years and one day for the whole twenty thousand square feet of space. And that is based, required based on tax law.
But we don't know what the purchase price is.
We're working that out. And that is one of the reasons for tabling the documents, so we can bring that back. One of the reasons it's important that the city have a long-term master lease and an option to buy is that the Department of Local Affairs will only grant money to cities and counties only. And they will only grant money for properties that cities and counties own. So this was a solution that the state Department of Local Affairs and their contracting worked out. And it was to say that they would agree to provide the two million, one hundred and forty thousand they're permitted to if the city had a significant financial ownership stake at the end of the tax credit period. So in DOLA's mind, a long-term lease with the city being bound to the property and an option for that to be conveyed to us at the end for our investment and their investment now is what they would recognize in lieu of ownership. So that's why we have a long-term lease. And at the end, even though it's called an option to purchase, it needs to be an option. It needs to be a conveyance.
Are the tax, I'm sorry, go ahead. Are the tax lawyers going to require that we leave substantial economic value on the table in this purchase agreement? Fair market value?
So the investors, that's kind of a good question. In fifteen years, that investor will effectively walk away. And it will be art space remains in that, the overall partnership as the then master led lessor. So the option as written, I expect to say fair market value or assumption of debt. And that debt will be the money that you put in, which could then just be simply created by.
I'll take a closer look at that because I've seen tax lawyers actually force non-economic outcomes on lessees.
Yeah, so the, the.
On tenants.
The short answer, I think, is really, there's no expectation of cash changing hands in fifteen years or in six weeks because you're putting your money in to do the build out. So if I'm understanding your question correctly, are you expecting to be at a detriment in fifteen years? I think the answer is no.
We want that to be there in the.
And I don't want the tax lawyer saying the lessor is not the owner because they're conveying it back to us for payment. Okay? So there between fair market value and a dollar is what makes the tax lawyers happy. I'm not sure I know where that is, that answer is for the city of Trinidad. I think it's a substantial term that I don't quite understand yet.
Okay, fair enough. We'll get that clarification. Our hope is to bring those to you within a week. So we'll allow the week to look at it.
Or if you want to give me a ring or.
And we will set up a call.
Absolutely.
Your attorney may need some clarification.
Fair enough.
So Mike, I agree.
Yes, I had a question on the, on the master lease, but.
Go ahead.
Okay. Basically, it says that we're paying as rent to the lessor taxes imposed on the tenant? And I didn't quite understand that.
Yeah. So the structure of this, the master lease is that the city of Trinidad will operate that space for what it costs to operate that space as, as, as far as the partnership is concerned. So the ownership of the building is not going to give you rental income. But there is exposure on the real estate for taxes, for maintenance, for the share of, you know, property and grounds maintenance and for utilities, to the extent they're not severe. So the rent that's being paid is just that expense.
Okay, but can we make it clear that it's only things that are levied on the lessor, not on the, not on the tenant? Because right now, it literally reads that we're paying to the lessor amounts that are levied on us. And it should state amounts to the extent they're levied on the lessor. Like if you, if the lessor gets hit with real estate taxes, I understand that.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say that right now.
Okay, so we, we can clarify that if you think it's needed. But the expectation is only costs attributable to that space would be your responsibility. So if it is in fact taxed and it's for whatever reason, you know, not exempted or there's uses of it that are not eligible, the property will be assessed at tax bill. That tax will become effectively.
And Ellen will reimburse what's levied on the lessor.
I think we can clarify the language. I, I understand what you're saying.
And that's, that's what I.
That was my question.
That's all three months wrong.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what our rental agreement payments are and what they are stated for. Because it was kind of unclear to me.
Yeah, so this is a difficult deal for me in that we have a space that is unoccupied. It changed to a different use. And expenses attributable to that in the future that we know are coming will be on a dollar value for. So what we're trying to structure in words is a plan to have you pay no more than what it costs to operate that space and hopefully lease it to someone else who pays you more than that. But that the partnership will not get any of that. But if, you know, there is a tax bill, we want to ensure that that is attributable to your space and then the partnership is paid for that. To the extent that we need to employ someone to shovel all the snow and remove all the snow on a per square foot basis, what's allocable to that space is the responsibility of that space. What's allocable to the lofts is paid by the lofts. So that we're not zero at the end of the day. We're not trying to make a name off this.
I understand, yeah.
I think we can clarify the language and we might do a separate call to, when we're looking at some, some potential language, we'll let you know. The other thing about the master lease is it will, it will be effective upon approval, but it doesn't actually take, it doesn't actually become.
The term begins.
Term begins, thank you, I couldn't find the word, when the certificate of occupancy on that space is issued. So during this entire time of construction, that's not effective. The term begins when the certificate of occupancy is issued. And then the option to purchase is fifteen years and one day from that date.
From that, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're not paying rent during construction?
And we don't really know what that will be assessed at until we get to the end of that period. Sorry, stupid question.
Is there, is the city going to employ a property manager? Or who's going to manage?
We're going to have that discussion over the next year. Once we get this financial close done and we go to construction, then the stakeholder group will begin to have a conversation with council about exactly that question. How that twenty thousand square feet is going to be developed and managed.
But that's just the community space.
That's just the community space. There's often lots and.
That's our basic.
We have a major base for third-party property management, a group called Silver Markham that does affordable housing, maintenance and operation across the state of Colorado. So they will be responsible for all the onsite maintenance operations and contracting out for some.
So we won't be in that realistic business. Well, this is, this is what they do.
The question I have is, this is in the option agreement. It says, in that certain declaration for art space Trinidad Main Street condominium, should there not be addresses attached to that particular location?
So the condo is not yet recorded, but it's.
You've approved it.
Yeah, so the condo map, once it's recorded, it will really just be those condo units as described. So the Main Street building, which is currently three addresses, will become the condo unit for the lofts, a condo unit for the commercial, and then a condo unit effectively for the exterior walls that is common element. So like the walls that cross both planes, those would be the three elements of that condominium. And the references in here are to that condominium unit. And once it's recorded, you'll have that.
We will do an address change.
Another thing, in that same area, and the dated as of, and it says two thousand eighteen, should that be two thousand nineteen?
It will be in the final.
So there are a number of sort of clerical errors, not errors, but updates will be incorporated, but general justice.
Because of the timing for close, we wanted to get this in front of you at a time where we could discuss specific things.
The other thing that comes up with, because it talks about one-year leases by tenants, is there a knockdown in case there's a tenant that has a reason to leave because of health or anything like that?
So this is references to master lease?
Yeah.
So this is, the master lease is really between the ownership partnership, owns the real estate, and the city of Trinidad. How the city of Trinidad then subleases to whatever other users, be it, you know, for-profit, nonprofit, community-based, whatever, that's your lease to execute and negotiate.
I was talking about the apartments as well.
So the apartments are on a one-year lease, you know, eviction laws vary state by state. We are always in a position to release residents from leases if there's good reason. If there's health-related things on, there's certain statutory releases, like military leave, things like that, that they just can't. But often if we can, you know, come to an amicable release, we'll do that.
I just want to make sure that there was something in there for the tenants, if that doesn't.
In the process that, that council agreed ago that we were referencing, we'll develop the documents on the community space side.
And if I may, I do just want to offer once again that although this is a space, the master lease space we're talking about for the city of Trinidad to administer and move forward with your goals and your missions, we're not going to stand idly by and if you do it all on your own, we are still partners with you to the extent we can be helpful and bring our expertise that we do in commercial leasing elsewhere. We'll be at the table, it will be helpful.
All right. Thank you. See you on the nineteenth.
Andrew won't be able to be here on the nineteenth, but we'll have conversations via phone prior to that. And then we'll have this to you, what we'd be for. So there will be an opportunity, if you have additional questions, to provide those back and get those answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on item nine, council reports.
Yes, council report. I was the new appointed liaison to Arts and Culture. Our first meeting was last week. And on that day, I had a rookie now. Now it's not able to attend. Trust me, I'd rather been at the Arts and Culture. Be that as it may, I have nothing to report in that regard. A couple of comments. Never lost with them. Potholes. The one by the radio station has been repaired. Perhaps it would have been in my best interest to explain. A quarter mile farther east, I've known it, there's a whole bunch of them. And then at the top of Garfield, there's some.
Did you get, did you get some this morning on?
I saw that.
Sandal.
I'm happy that there's a compliment in there. I'm happy to see that.
And then the one on San, well, actually more than one on San Francisco. We're going to take them, we're going to contract out and totally remove the asphalt and replace it with kind of.
I know whenever I drive by Mike's house, I'm going to fall in and be sucked up. That's scary stuff.
Especially when the sun is low in the sky.
I get scared, man. Enough, enough about the bottles. Earlier, we were talking about marijuana and the whole thing. The marijuana tax is probably the most widely discussed topic. It's the least understood topic, but yet those who engage in conversation speak with the greatest of authority. And that having been said, I think it's important and behooves us and answers a number of questions. One came to my, recently in my new job, a lady from Texas called complaining that her taxes had gone up, real estate taxes, and wanted to know what the hell we were doing with all that marijuana money. So that's how grossly misunderstood this is. So my suggestion is, today we received an email that had six attachments that spoke to the dispersment of marijuana. Yeah, through resolutions over the past years. And it says, this is how much money we have, this is how much we spent it. I think it would behoove the city of Trinidad. I think it would behoove the city of Trinidad, if we could draft a public release, press release, that enumerates all of those things, put those out there for everybody to read. And more importantly, add this newest resolution where how we're spending and trying to budget that money so that those who choose to engage in conversation about marijuana tax and what we've done with it will be better informed as they have those coffee shop discussions.
We had a discussion about that today. For every quarter where you do the formal resolution allocating the money, we're going to publish those.
That's a really good idea.
And list it on the website.
Yes, well, I know, and I know it's on the website, and it should be, or if it is, but it is there. But the point is, this information needs to be out so that they know we're buying fire trucks, we're doing this, we're doing that, yada, yada, yada. And we're just not willy-nilly giving it to somebody that they don't know about. And we're not going to pay your property taxes with it, you know?
Right.
And that's all I got to say about anything.
Good.
I think we all got the same call today, Mr. Nushy.
Yeah.
That's what that sounds like.
I sent him all the resolutions.
Did you read?
Sorry, I've been inundated with reading material.
Oh, I didn't. No, I'm just, I've got a call today because of that same subject. I, um, I am the new liaison on the Main Street group. And I, I've attended two meetings. Yesterday was an actual meeting here at Saffol. And to say that those ladies are energetic is an understatement. We energized Mike right out of his office yesterday because he couldn't stand it. But they've caught a lot of good ideas and they're really, really very enthusiastic about what they're doing. I'm going to recommend to them that we do a walking tour of Trinidad before they decide to do anything else on cityscaping and decide what they want to do. Uninvited, I went to the meeting for, the construction meeting for Noah's Ark and the construction company. The Noah's Ark people are really nervous, but they do not understand the complexity of trying to get all this together. But the reason I'm saying that, I want to thank you, Tom and Greg, for being so patient and so diligent in that. I mean, you know, I, they hounded me, they hounded me to go to that meeting to.
We got it.
You got it? Well, you guys are kind of slow, so I had to make sure to go to that meeting. But, you know, I don't think they understand the process. And they're very nervous about, you know, they've been promised a new shelter for ten years. So it made them feel good that I was there. I accomplished absolutely nothing, but I'm glad.
Sounds like you did do it there.
I was there, but that's about, I, I walked in late to begin with. I think Tom and Greg were doing a great job. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That's all.
I've got a few things, so bear with me. The CML legislative days are this Valentine's Day, the fourteenth of February. If you can and want to, you can still register. There will be kind of like a legislative days that we've had with CML before at the Capitol. This will be another one where actually a new governor will be there to address the legislative session. And there's a whole litany of things going on throughout the day where we can learn, and I will be going. But if any of you'd like to come as well, of course, try to. It's on Valentine's Day, so it's kind of challenging for some people, you know? Also, with that being said, Kevin Ballmer has been appointed as the new CML executive director, and he will be taking that position here shortly. Sam Mamet will be leaving, and he's having a retirement party, if you will, on the twenty-first of March. And all are welcome to attend at the CML headquarters there on the Eleventh and Sherman in Denver. It's between four and seven P M. It's, I believe, a Thursday, which is kind of weird, but they're having a little fiesta for him. There's also the CML annual conference in Brackenridge I want to remind people about. So keep your calendars open, June eighteenth to the twenty-first. There's a wealth of knowledge for everybody to attend, so if you can and want to, it's a great benefit to us to learn about other communities and how they've dealt with issues, and we can kind of bounce off ideas with each other. And on more fun things, um, the youth club had their snowflake ball, the second annual snowflake ball. We were lucky to have it this year at the La Quinta Ballroom, or one of their conference rooms. And it was catered by Dave and Pam, and, you know, we had a DJ Spasely, who was James Howard. We came by and donated his time and services too. It was just really nice that the community is coming around because we're trying to enhance these kids' lives by teaching them manners and how to serve plates and, and just a little more etiquette that is not probably commonplace all the time for them. So we're just trying to enhance their lives in that regard. And it was really a great success. A lot of the kids dressed up. It was really nice on Saturday. Lastly, the Urban Forestry Board just wants to remind individuals that they have a wealth of knowledge. They are trying to get a arborist certification for their president right now so that way they can help with precision, pruning, et cetera, around power lines and also to avoid lopping of other trees that they're trying to beautify in the community and just doing them correctly. Yes, they're a wealth of knowledge, so please, if you, if your people are thinking about doing a streetscape, maybe we'll, I'm going to confirm with them because they may have some great ideas to help out. And that's all I have.
We had, telephonically, we had the Arts and Board meeting last week. And I guess I could say that the Twin Eagle contract, we're purchasing power from Twin Eagle Resources, is, we just voted to approve the assignment of that to Public Service of Colorado. What that means is that we had been trying to keep three moving pieces and negotiating with Twin Eagle to buy them out in conjunction with one of the other power supply people. Well, now that that's done, and Twin Eagle did not even buy it out by any of the people we're, we're dealing with, that kind of narrows the field down as far as what we're doing. We had the executive session. I think we had a productive discussion about exactly how we're going to make assumptions and value to the present value of our various proposals. So that should be getting a lot clearer over the course of the next month. And that's all I have.
So all I have is for Greg, because you're so famous. For anyone that's been watching Channel eleven, what is that, K K T V News? Every day it's on there. This document provided to me by Trinidad City Manager Greg's son, and it lays out exactly where our marijuana money goes for everybody to see. And it talks about the fire truck and border towns and effects that marijuana being legalized in other counties may have on us. So nobody's doing as good by their report as we are, and nobody's spending the money as wisely or preparing for the future like we are. And so I just wanted to say you're, you're getting more famous every day, Greg. TV station is just all over this document provided to me by Greg's son, Trinidad City Manager. I just had to bring that up. That's all I have.
I just have one short thing to say, and that, there's been a couple of phone calls from people on Arizona's street over there. And in the last month or so, I've been spending a lot of time at my rental house up there on Arizona. And their complaint was about how much people are speeding up that road. And I'll tell you, when I take, I have my little breaks, I tell my wife I'm working hard and I'm not working. I'll take my little cigar break and go outside and have my cup of coffee. And I'll tell you, there, those cars are going up that street. I'm not saying thirty-five, forty miles an hour, they're going sixty miles an hour, seventy. One day I was sitting outside there and I heard, I heard the car start from the bottom of Arizona where the lunch town used to be, because here. And he grew up that road, and it was a little blue Honda, whatever it was, those souped-up little cars. And if he wasn't going eighty miles an hour, he wasn't going thirty. But I know our police department are shorthanded and they do what they can. But I think, you know, they post the cop up there at certain times. They could make a thousand dollars a day by taking. And I mean, I mean, these people are flying up there. And also, we have where the mayor and I live up there in Pinney Terrace, we have a couple of people up there that, that we put the pedal to the metal. And we've got a lot of kids up there. And I holler at them three, four times. And I, I'd just like to see if Mr. Torioso or something could post a police car there at an hour or whatever, different time of day. And they're going to make their money. I know they will, because those cars are flying up there. But that's all I have to say.
Well, I have quite a bit to report. A lot of it has to do around the legislative days, Action Twenty-two visit that we did. But, you know, talking, Anthony, about the proceeds of marijuana. And actually, one of the things I'm going to do next week is I'm going to have about fifty copies of this made. I'm going to place them around all the tables because it's kind of like all of us. We have to carry a copy of this in our back pocket everywhere we go. So that, and matter of fact, what I would like to see is the newspapers print this so that they can take. Okay, so although through the newspapers, I think we only have like thirty percent of the population that reads the newspapers. How do we get to the rest of them? Whether it's Facebook or, I'm not really sure. But that's another issue. We, Greg and Tara and myself, we attended the Action Twenty-two legislative days. Highlights, of course, we met with Senate President Leroy Garcia and to discuss the progress and what's going on in Trinidad. And we sat down with him, and we only give you about twenty minutes. But we were able to cover the major points of what's going on in Trinidad. And, you know, Fishers Peak, the Space Creed, Fox Theater, those are the three points that we talked to him about. And being that he does have a family history from Trinidad, he was very interested in what's happening here, here in town. The other thing that he, we discussed was, he has been, I can't remember if he was a proponent of the Senate Bill nineteen dash zero zero one, and that was to expand the medication and system treatment pilot program. And right now, I think there are two areas that have this program, but they're looking for two more areas. And when we came back, we started looking into, to see if the hospital, Armand Carmel, wanted to participate in this. And if they want, we'll give it to them and let them run. The hospital opted out, so we're waiting to hear from Armand Carmel if they decide. They, they sound interested. Yeah, so Louis is very interested in, in going forward with it, so hopefully we'll hear shortly. Because we do know that that's a treatment facility that's, or a treatment option that's needed for all the issues that may happen in town. Also met with Representative Susan Beckman. And even though she is from District Thirty-eight out of Littleton, I believe, but she is originally from Trinidad. That is, remember Mr. and Mrs. Noel? That's their daughter? And she and I have passed by each other in the last three years that I've been going up to Denver. So I finally, he said, "I don't want to sit down and talk to her." So we had Debbie write her a second appointment. We met with her for about half an hour as well and kind of talked to her about the same issues that we talked to Leroy Garcia about. And it sounded like she was totally unaware of what's going on here in town. So after we talked to her, she got very interested, and she said, you know, "Keep me up to date as to what's going on in Trinidad." And when I told her about the Fishers Peak deal, when we do have the closing or whatever, we might even send her the invitation to come down because it sounded like that might be something she might want to attend to, so.
What's her name again?
Susan Beckman. We had lunch with GoCo Colorado, and what was interesting was we were encouraged of possible additional funding for the project of Fishers Peak, so that was, they kind of threw that out there. We listened to several panel discussions, and I, they were Phil Weiser, who's the Attorney General, State Treasurer, Dave Young, and who was the last guy that we talked to? Turns out, but I think that was one of the person that spoke about, I didn't write his name down. The governor, Lieutenant Governor. Oh, Lieutenant Governor was there, Governor Polis was there, but then there was, he was Secretary of State at one time, I believe, or something like that. There were panel discussions. Yeah, Governor Polis came in and gave a briefing as to what his vision is of Colorado. He also brought up the, the road problems for the next twenty years, that Colorado is going to have a twenty billion dollar exposure to what's going to cost for roads in the next twenty years. It's like twenty billion for two years, or for the next twenty years. They're also considering about vehicle, autonomous vehicle road usage fee. They want to, they're considering going from a gas tax to a fee. One interest to, that hopefully maybe teachers will take advantage of, is that rural Colorado pays very low salaries. So they're talking about maybe doing a forgiveness five-year plan for teachers to come to rural Colorado and teach so that they could pay off some of their students' loan debts.
They do that for doctors?
Yeah, they do for doctors, but they're thinking of doing that, I think, for, they'll do that for teachers, so it'd be nice. Believe it or not, right now, there are three thousand vacant teacher positions in Colorado. A lot of teachers that were short in Colorado. They also are working, they want to grant two point five million dollars for upstarts in the state. They're looking at possibly wanting to decrease the income tax from four point six three to four point four nine. Diana Preymara, who's the Lieutenant Governor, her interest, of course, is rural health. And she says, she said that costs are about, are roughly ten percent higher than urban areas in the state of Colorado, to assume about five hundred dollars, which is quite high. You might be pretty aware of that. They're also talking about expunging marijuana records. They also want to, they're looking at creating drug treatment facilities like we were talking, was talking about earlier. It was interesting, it said that one million people in Colorado have a mental health condition, and only forty percent are receiving treatment. And the reason, the reason for that is, first of all, the cost of treatment, hard to get an appointment, the stigma of it, and someone just finding out. So these are reasons why some people are not seeking treatment for the, for the issues. There's five thousand four, at, at that time, it's probably more or less, now I'm not sure. Five thousand four hundred and thirty-three people are incarcerated in our prisons. Thirteen hundred and twenty-five are mental health facilities. Eight percent of high school students have attempted suicide. That was, to me, that was just, maybe you guys know, but it was astounding to me. And listening to the various speakers, somehow or other, they snuck in or they talked about the concern with opioids and the opioid problems that we have in, in this state and across the country. So the big talk across, I think, the state seems to be the opioid issues and how to address that. So I think that's something that we're going to continue to hear about in the, in the future here. And just to let you know, I got a call last week that the interim president from the college called me and wanted me to meet with him just to talk. And I sat down and had a good discussion today about the college. We had a good discussion about how he views the college and how I view the college and things that I'm hearing with the movies. So he was, I, I like him. It's, it's too bad we can't keep him, but he seems to be a decent guy.
How long is he planning? I mean, I know he's just an intern.
Next week, there's going to be, they have three potentials that are going to be here next week. And hopefully, guys can go, it's Thursday, Wednesday and, Wednesday and Thursday. As a matter of fact, it was posted, it was posted in the paper as to the time. Fourteen, they'll spend, they'll spend one day in Elmo's and one day here. So anybody that wants to visit with them there, if you look at the newspaper today, it shows actually timeframes of where they're going to be available to speak with. So I, I think it'd be a good idea if you guys can maybe be part of that. That's all I have. I know. Greg? I just sent out a request for appearance by the governor so that he can come here. Hopefully, on March sixth, we want to do a celebration of purchase closing of the crazy front trench. And that coincides with a meeting of the GoCo Board here. They'll be here from, they'll be arriving on the evening of the fifth and meeting here through the seventh, excuse me. So this meeting, the celebration will be, we're planning it for six-thirty. What day of the week is it?
Sixth would be Wednesday.
March the sixth.
Um, start at six-thirty, and I'm asking the governor to attend at seven. And, uh, the suggestion to do that was from Sal Pace, and he's been involved in the governor's transition team, so...
That's Sal Pace.
Quite good, yeah.
So where would this be? Well, I just gave him here as an address because I don't know yet. I, I have a, I, I... It's actually dinner, it's an actual meeting. Well, it's, it's going to be just a celebration. It's not going to be a sit-down meeting.
No food, just booze.
That's right.
A celebration.
B Y O D. And, uh, so as we flesh this out and we get some more information, I'll pass that along.
The other thing I think we talked about is the twenty-eighth on the closing is to try to hype it up to the media, and hopefully we can be there too for the closing on the twenty-eighth.
It'll be probably one-sided. I don't think the seller will be there, but God trust for public land and major conservatives.
It'd be nice to, council to attend to.
Where are they gonna have it, like, for abstract or something?
We don't know yet.
And then, uh, I'm, I'm attending the City County Management Association Conference in Glenwood Springs starting tomorrow, and because there's been a rockslide on I-70, it's gonna be about a two or three-hour longer trip, I think. And so I'll leave in the morning.
Through you.
Can't go over Independence Pass.
They're telling people in Denver to go through Spiegel Springs, so...
It's a picture of red mountains as well.
Yeah. Um, you know, we met with Roseberry Shire with the Housing Authority today, and I'll be preparing a letter for their, uh, review during the meeting next Wednesday, which also, because it plays into the Space Creed project, um, it's good to address that before the rest of the, of the news. And then finally, do you want me to send the letter to the Livestock, Livestock Association or not?
I wouldn't. That's my thought. Why?
You sent the letter?
No, I haven't.
You prepared the letter.
I would say yes.
My first inclination is send.
I agree with that.
I thought I'd be the one that's cavalier here. I was gonna just like, let it go, you know? You guys are like, no.
Send the letter. I'm from Western Canada.
Signature required, you know, we will know.
We should all sign.
I'll do that. That's all I have.
If we're gonna do that, we should all sign, I guess.
Sign by the mayor.
Probably sign by the mayor.
At all. Yeah, at all, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yes.
I don't have that, Mary.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Item ten, after that, there is right there. Item eleven, executive session, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Development strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under. C R S section twenty-four dash six dash oh two forty regarding lease of property, motion to go into the possession. Second.
Second.
All vote please.
Venato?
Yep.
Goodall?
Yes.
Greggo?
Yes.
Willbush?
Yes.
McTain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Take a quick break so that... We'll just stay in here. We'll just stay in here.
Everybody stay seated.